Good evening and welcome to the Seta Independent Schools District Meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the Board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided by Seta ISD policy BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens input portion at the start of the meeting. Legally, the Board may listen but may not enter into discussion on matters in citizens input. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at six o'clock. We have a quorum with Trustee Hernandez, Trustee Hagerty, Trustee Woodruff, Trustee Dyer, Dwyer, and myself, Charlie Bustillos. Trustee Ochoa is not able to join us and are considered excused.
You didn't say my name.
I didn't? Yeah, I did. I said, I said Woodruff. I said Woodruff. I'll say it. And Trustee Connie Woodruff. Yeah. Trustee, I'm gonna say it again. Trustee Woodruff, please introduce the Bella JRROTC.
It is my pleasure. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors, reciting the pledges of allegiance, then posting the colors. The colors tonight are being presented by the junior ROTC color guard from Bella High School. The color guard commander is Cadet Robert Lopez IV. The other color guard members are Cadet Jorge Baeza, Cadet Ariana Buenrostr, Cadet Diana Rojas. The pledge leader is Sofia Lozoya, sixth grader from Bella Middle School. Will you please stand for the presentation of the colors, reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance, the Texas Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence? Please remain standing until the cadets have departed.
Present, off.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, please join me in the pledge to the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Order, off. Up, up, hey! Up, up, left, left, left. Ah, ah, back down, arch. Left, left, color guard, up. Off. Colors. Present, off. Order, off. Up, ah, hey! Color guard, rock ball. Left, left, left. Right, 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 left, left. Color guard, hop. Center, hey! Ah, hey! Up, ah, left, left, left. Ah.
Dr. De La Torre, do we have recognitions and introductions this evening?
Yes, good evening, President Bustillos, members of the Board, esteemed guests. At this time, I invite our Chief Human Capital Management Officer, Ms. Bobby Russell Garcia, to lead in our recognitions and introductions this evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Board, Superintendent Dr. De La Torre. We have one recognition for you this evening. At this time, we ask all trustees to please come to the front of the dais. Audience members, please remain seated until all recognitions are complete. Thank you. Tonight's recognition honors the talented and dedicated Eastwood High School Trooper Marching Band, which captured the Class 3A championship at the Bands of the Americas Arizona Regionals and Flag Staff last month. These exceptional musicians represented the entire state of Texas at the contest, where they competed against 22 high school marching bands from Arizona, California, Nevada, New Mexico, and Oklahoma. In 3A, the Trooper Marching Band brought home the championship and Outstanding General Effect Award, along with a fourth place overall finish for its Monterey show, the school's best ever result at a Bands of America contest. Just a week earlier, the Troopers competed at the Bands of the Americas New Mexico Regionals, capturing the bronze medal in their class for placing third overall. And we wish them the best as they begin their UIL journey toward the State 6A championships. Ladies and gentlemen, please help me congratulate the student leaders of the Eastwood High School Trooper Marching Band, beginning with drum majors Brandon Sandoval, Julian Montzibai, Angelina Mendoza, and Ramiro Versiaga IV. Also, let's give a big round of applause to Guard Captains Train Pham, Dmitri Molina. They are accompanied by Director of Bands Benjamin Bettis, Assistant Directors Robert Hating, John Omen, and Art Avila. Guard Director Paula Esparza and Principal Rob Robledo.
Parents, if you want to come to the front-
Come to the front. You're more than welcome to come to the front to take pictures so you can, you can get a closer view.
Let's hear it one more time for the Trooper Marching Band. This concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Woodruff, do we have any citizens input this evening?
No, we do not.
Thank you. Dr. De La Torre, do we have any presentations this evening?
Yes, President Bustillos, members of the Board, we have a presentation this evening on college career and military readiness. It will be delivered by our very own Dr. Brenda Chekón, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, President Bustillos, Dr. De La Torre, members of the Board. Here I am again, presenting on another point of pride for the district. Last month, as you recall, we presented on our academic outcomes for the 24-25 school year, and today, I wanted to break down that data a little further into our college career and military readiness data. So that's what we're gonna look into, part of our accountability. So let me start with... Let me start off by showing our data. As you recall, back in 2017, this is when CCMR was born through one of the legislations, and it asked all Texas public schools to ensure that they were tracking and instill methods and funding systems to enhance and be able to meet Texas 60 by 30 goal. And that 60 by 30 is meaning that most of the kids in college, by this year, 30, 60% of them would be in college or a career. Since then, of course, a lot has changed, but what hasn't changed is the demand of college and career readiness as we continue in Texas. So back in 2017, when we started, we had a college and career readiness rate of 46.7%. Today, we are proud that the class of 2024 ended with a 92.2-
College and career military readiness rate. So your CCMR rates are the highest in the region. We consistently improve year after year across both college and career readiness, and 44% of the students who graduated from the class of 2024 achieved both college and career readiness. So again, lots of work into this data, from our high school principals to our high school counselors, to CTE Advanced Academics. It is a whole team behind our college and career readiness data. So here, I break down the data for you by indicators. So your college and career readiness measures evaluates your industry-based certifications, which is CTE, your dual credit, the number of classes that our dual credit students take, your associate's degrees, your advanced academic scores, your AP, TSI reading, TSI math, SAT and ACT, and SAT math. In our district, ACT also is a measure, but we go with the SAT versus the ACT. And so these are the different indicators that belong to this accountability, the accountability of CCMR. So in green, you can see the areas of how we're growing year after year in these indicators. So overall, you've seen growth in most of these areas, minus SAT math. So those are our pieces. We're very proud of the work around our associate's degrees. I know that was something that Mr. Hagerty touched on, I wanna say two years ago, Mr. Hagerty. So we've been working a lot with our college, early colleges across the district, as well as another big emphasis on industry-based certifications, which is CTE. But most importantly is our TSI math and TSI reading. TSI math and reading is what we took back then with the Accuplacer. They've gone through several names, but it's mostly the placement test that you use when you go into a college or university in Texas. Part of the 89th legislation is that they asked to make sure that the Board of Trustees was aware of a few things. Part of your valuation or scorecard for the district includes House Bill III goals, when those House Bill III goals were born, right? One of the things that they've asked to make sure that we are sharing with our community or Board is, how are you closing the gaps in this domain? Meaning that what's good for one is good for all, especially when it comes to our high-focus subgroups, such as our Hispanics compared to our all students. And so as you can see based on the data, we're very proud of it. You can see that there is very, we've closed the achievement gap for many of them. They're performing the same way that your other subgroups are. So this is one of the changes that came through the 89th legislature. They wanted to make sure that the community was aware, how are you closing the gap for all students, for all your subgroups across the district? IHE completion, this is your institutes of higher ed completion. So how are students, once they leave us, are they completing, right? So that's very important, especially to the region. So you can see here that that also, how many of them earn post-secondary credentials in high school? Now, this data is a little lagged, obviously, because this comes from the Higher Institution Board, so they have to report it, then it gets reported to us. But the last time that this was reported, you can see 54% for the class of 2024 and 23. We also continue to see increases in the number of students who earned post-secondary credentials in high school. So these are the number of students that are leaving us with some sort of credential for post-secondary, whether it's dual credit, a three-year higher in advanced academics, or an industry-based certification.
Dr. Chekón, does that include the PTEC?
Does that include, I'm sorry?
The PTEC?
Yes, anything dual credit, any advanced AP or three-year higher, or anything that gives them post-secondary credentials in high school. So one of our goals, of course, is to, as the world is changing as we know it, it's not the same that it was before, so we really wanna emphasize when we talk about college and career readiness, on the 10 that you see to your right, we really want to instill these soft skills in our students across our courses in advanced academics, dual credit, college and career. We wanna make sure that we are, when they leave us, that they're resilient, that they're curious, that they're dependent on social influence, analytical thinking, innovative, everything, all the soft skills they need in order to compete in the world market. So how do we help students be college-ready? You have four early college high schools, of course, and you have a PTEC academy, and we provide them to earn an associate while attending high school. All our schools offer college-level courses free of charge to students. So that's very important. I think I wanna emphasize that piece to our community, is that our college courses, whether it's dual credit through EPCC, an AP, or an industry-based certification, are free of charge to our students. All our high school students are given the opportunity to take a course PSAT, SAT, and TSI, and all of our high schools have a dedicated GoCenter specialist that helps students and parents to fill out information as they get ready to fill out college applications, scholarships, as well as a financial aid process that's now required for graduation. To earn, we have a few things. We have first our OnRamps courses, and our OnRamps courses is an agreement between us and UT Austin, where the students are able to take a course, for example, in physics, right? They get a high school credit for physics that accounts for graduation for science, and they also could receive a college credit in physics if they're enrolled in an OnRamps. Of course, dual credit is what we're more familiar with, that's our partnerships that you have with EPCC, and these are courses that are either at the high school, or in some cases, the students attend EPCC, whether it's Valle Verde or Trans Mountain, or in some cases, they're online courses, just depending the way the schedules of the students and what's available is the dual credit courses that we offer. Of course, and then AP is also another area that we offer. So students, in order to earn the credit, they must take the AP exam and earn at least a three or better to earn college credit. So these are our three methods of how you can earn college credit in high school. For the class of 2024, you can see it's a nice chunk, a nice amount of scholarship money that our students received. Every year, our goal is to increase that at least by 2%. Everyone has goals in our district, and so our GoCenters work tirelessly to make sure that our students are receiving all the financial aid, grants, or any other scholarship opportunity that's available to them. 94.5%, 58% of our students applied for financial aid to attend post-secondary, whether it's a technical school, a two-year college, or a four-year university. Of course, our Eastletta Foundation is also something that awards our students their scholarships, so we're very proud of that partnership and the opportunity to award our seniors those scholarships. And then some things to highlight is going on right now, as a matter of fact, in the Parkland area. Every year, we host college and career ready nights across the district, and this invites all eighth graders from your middle schools to attend their high school and start learning about the different programs that either their feeder pattern high school offers, or the early college, or the career center. So these are the different things that I think this district does well. We have early college high school nights as well, and we also provide transition tours. So this is also something unique to the district, where our fifth grade and eighth graders have the opportunity to start attending the next transition school. So we call them either bridge camps, right, in the summer, when fifth graders get ready to transition into sixth grade, or eighth graders, when they get ready to transition into their high school, into the high school of their choice. So we offer different transition services, different bridge camps across the district to make sure students and parents are well-informed of the opportunities that are available for students, because there's a lot available. We just wanna make sure that we educate both our students and our parents. Career and technical ed, this is CTE. This is a big point of pride for the district, as one, almost 50%, actually, almost 60% of our kids receive an industry-based certification from the class of 2024. So with CTE, we provide different programs of study, right? That's what they're called, they're called pathways. It's gone through a lot of change in the most recent years because of the workforce demand, specifically in Texas, and so our CTE programs of study have been revamped. Hopefully, they stay the way they are for the next five years, that's what we were told by TEA, but it is an industry that's constantly changing, and so that's why they're constantly revamping and making some tweaks here. But here are some of the pathways that we offer. We offer arts and humanities, business and industry, public services, of course, and STEM. So every high school offers different academic pathways that are focused for career and technical ed. So these programs obviously equip the students with the practical skills, hands-on, the opportunity to thrive, whether they decide to go to college or straight into the workforce or the military. So out of our 29 pathways, there's something available at each of our high schools, including our career center, that could be of interest to students. So each learning community is unique here in Eastletta as well. So of course, we start with our career center, who, two years ago, I believe now, is two years old, yes, two years old now, opened its doors, and I would say it has just some of the best equipment, the best programs in the region. It is a 21st century career center, and we're very proud of it. So it offers everything from architecture to real estate to welding, to diesel, to automotive, to culinary, to just realist, everything. It also offers teaching and training now, that's a program that we added, so we start growing our own teachers that are interested, and our students that attend the career center get busped or transported on their own from your seven different comprehensive high schools, and they go either for a half-day in the morning or half-day in the afternoon. This is also where our PTEC program is unique to Eastletta too. Our PTEC program is available to all our schools across the district. So when I first started in the CTE world and in the college and career ready, I think we had about 12 students. I'm proud to say, I think, last time I checked, there was over 120 students participating in our PTEC program. So it's been, it's made some good, good gains. In addition, our career center is full, so that's another point of pride. Lots of students are interested in the career world, and so our programs, our career center is full, morning and afternoon. So that's another thing that I think has paid off through our transition, highlight through our transition visits and all of that good stuff that- That, another thing, too, is, of course, everything changes, right? Student interest changes. Right now, students are interested in the careers, which is great. Some shifts, it shifts back and forth, either college or career. But we want to make sure that we emphasize both are equally important and valued. Not one is better than the other. Both can provide for their families an opportunity. And I'll go quickly through these, because I know you're very familiar with them, but I wanted to make our community aware. Of course, Beller High School is known for their Health Professions Program, but they also have different programs of study, as mentioned before. They have law enforcement, graphic design, digital communications, engineering. But our point of pride, or our signature program, as we like to say, it does have the nursing program, Nurse Science Texas, the Texas Tech Associate's Degree. So every year, we've awarded more and more students who are almost graduating as an RN, minus maybe a year and a half left, from Beller High School. So that is a partnership that we have with Texas Tech and something that we continue to foster and grow. As the market changes, we want to make sure, especially in El Paso, that they're ready and competitive for that. But if you go to your local Walgreens or across the El Paso Humane Society, you'll see your Beller students doing their internships there. They're all over the place in the medical world. So again, lots to be proud of in the Beller area. Followed by Del Valle, of course, who has these signature programs. The Biomedical Science Signature Program is unique, not unique, but a point of pride to Del Valle High School. That used to be under the direction of Dr. Benavides, and of course, now it's transitioned to other teachers. But Del Valle also offers several of these programs of study. Eastwood High School, our Digital Communications is their signature program. You see them when they're out in the field, obviously, recording and streaming those programs, not just on the athletics, but the fine arts. And any event that happens at their school, they're always out there making sure that the communications of Eastwood High School is taken care of. Hanks High School has, of course, its early college program, along with those other programs of study. Parkland High School, another program of study that they have is the Parkland Early College. I will say that they are the best high school in the Northeast. They are the only one that offer the early college, high school, in, compared to Andrews or Chapin, that are their neighbors, as well as other programs, such as law enforcement, business management, and engineering as well. Riverside High School, they also have the Engineering Foundations. They also have a dual-credit academy that offers dual-credit courses as well. And then we have East Letta High School, who, of course, has the early college available there, along with different opportunities, law enforcement, business, and digital communications. Y lines on our course, our Young Women's Leadership Academy also offers these particular programs. And then, of course, you have Valle Verde, which is your standalone early college program, but also does offer CTE courses. So they, of course, do the Associates of Arts, but they also do offer robotics and the foundations of business. So changes that are coming our way or your way due to the eighty-ninth legislative session and other changes is one of the things that will come based in accountability is what we call tiers. So pretty soon, you'll start hearing me present, once in twenty twenty-eight, that these industry-based certifications will now be tiered, and they will be valued based on tiers. Meaning that the highest one will be a tier one, I mean, high skill. Tier two will be, a high-wage occupation, I'm sorry, tier two will be high skill, and tier three will be neither. So what TEA has done is said, okay, you know, and I'm going to use, I don't know, OSHA as an example, even though it's not a certification that the state sees. But OSHA, it would be considered a tier three. It's important, right? But that OSHA certification by itself is not going to give you a high wage or a high-skill job compared to your welding certification that the kids can receive while in high school. That is considered a tier one, because immediately leaving high school, the workforce is ready to use that certification and put it to use to be a high wage. So you'll start seeing TEA differentiate in accountability the IBCs that our students take. In addition now, this is a big one, is JROTC. JROTC will now live under CTE. It'll be considered a path rate, it'll be considered a program of study. And their certification will be the ASVAB test that they take. All our students currently take the ASVAB for the military. So that will live now in the CTE world, and will be able to eligible for funding as well. But that is new, because JROTC is now being recognized under the career and technical world, but they'll continue their same pathways that they're currently have. Their certification or their end product will be the ASVAB. And then, one big piece that's coming through CCMR is that the values must reflect their correlation to post-secondary success. So for example, obviously, one dual-credit course is important. It gives the students the experience and the awareness to college-level material. But the Associate's Degree obviously is of more value. So again, TEA is going on that tiering kind of world to say, what is, what's, what's going to give our kids the biggest bang for their buck, right? What's going to give them the most value out there? And that's how we'll be rated for accountability in future. Any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Hernandez?
Thank you, Dr. Chacon. Thank you to your team and everybody involved in putting together that data. I know that was a lot of work. One thing that stood out was the, the improvement from twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-four. I think we went from like forty percent to ninety-two percent or something like that.
Correct.
Is that normal across, compared to our sister districts and across the state? Is everybody seeing that kind of improvement, or is that just us?
That's just us. But we do have the highest CCMR rate in the region. I, I can't, off the top of my head, remember what El Paso's is. I think Socorro is about seventy-seven, if I'm not mistaken, last time I saw their data, right, Raul? Yes. Is it normal? Well, for us, we always want to get better and better, right? Is it a trend across the state? If you recall, a few, maybe two years ago, everybody was very upset at TEA, because one of the things that the commissioner did in the, through F accountability is that he raised that CCMR standard, remember, from a sixty to an eighty percent, right? So you couldn't be in a district if you weren't at at least eighty percent CCMR rate. So across the state, people have seen increases in CCMR. I think we're all doing a better job of ensuring that students are college and career ready. I would definitely say that in the region, you've improved the most. And it's the work of everybody. Like I said, it's the work of the counselors, your high school counselors making sure that kids are in the right courses, are auditing those transcripts, are auditing those graduation plans, making sure your high school principals, who work tirelessly to make sure that kids not only finish, right? It's one thing to get a diploma, but also leave college and career readiness, along, of course, with the hard work of our teachers. But I would say the improvement is unique to our district and some districts across Texas. But nonetheless, we're not content. We still have some work to do, especially in that TSI world.
Can you move, I think it's two slides, or that one right there? But also, the IBCs, twenty seventeen, two percent to fifty percent is a huge increase. I mean, am I wrong in being shocked and surprised by, by this progress?
No, you should not be shocked and surprised. That was our data back in twenty seventeen. Again, it's setting that expectation that we can't have CTE programs that do not lead to certifications in our district. So ju- just as important as the EOC teacher is, right, making sure that students pass English one, English two, everyone's accountable to making sure that even if you're a electrical teacher, you have certifications that our students can complete and should complete while they're here, because they're free to students. It's critical that we hold everybody accountable for the success of our students. So yes, it was that low, yes, we're very proud of where we've become.
That's incredible. I mean, I, I don't have the words to express how impressive this is. And the data really shows why we are the number-one district in the county. Transition tours, fifth grade gets to go on a tour. How are parents being notified about these tours?
So you should be, that comes, as a matter of fact, as we speak, pretty soon, in the fall. So what happens is, you'll get a permission slip for your child to be able to attend East Letta Middle, right? And visit East Letta Middle throughout the school day. And you'll also be invited to a CCR night. I believe, for example, in your community, it's later in November, if I'm not mistaken. And parents are informed, and you get to sign up, and you get to come to your students and learn all about what opportunities are available at your middle school.
Very good. I was asking as a parent, because I have a fifth.
I knew you were. Yeah, that, that's coming.
Last question. For IBCs, tier threes, how many of these certifications are the districts handing out? And should we be, if it's not a high skill?
So that is coming out in October. So that was a recent change through the eighty-ninth legislature and also House Bill eight. So that list hasn't been released. It should be released here pretty soon. We don't believe we will have a lot of tier-three certifications. But if we do, what, the unique part about CTE is that, under those programs of study, we get to select the different certifications our students can take in that program of study. So once we have that tier-three, what's tier-three, what's tier-two, tier-one, then we'll definitely adjust. But our goal is not to issue tier-threes. Our goal, obviously, will be to issue tier-ones and tier-twos.
Very good. I agree with that goal. Thank you very much, Dr. Chacon, and you and everybody involved. The entire district should be very proud with this progress. Thank you.
Trista Hagerty?
I have a comment, but also I have a couple of questions after. My comment is, is this growth is very impressive. I definitely want to, want to thank you very much. I want to thank your staff, all the educators who provided what our students needed to achieve these amazing results. Of course, I'm going to ask that this work and this upward trend keeps continuing. But I know it's not easy, especially being that our budget has only presented obstacles instead of opportunities. And with that said, along with asking for the continued increase in student success, I would also like to ask you, please, take care of the individuals who are at the front lines of making this happen. Whether it's come time for teachers or figuring out a way to get the more prep time, and then the ancillary employees that are an integral part of the success as well. Just if we can find a way to ease their burden, because we're certainly not easing the workload, and the work that they're doing is, it's impressive. I would love to see the math scores go up more than six percent. But I'm happy with all the, the numbers that are up there.
Yes, you're absolutely right. There is, although ninety-two is very, very high, there is plenty of room to grow in still in TSI math data when it comes to more kids getting their Associate's Degree before they graduate from high school, more kids attending dual-credit. There's lots to work on, there's every year. And, and although we do have some financial obstacles, we want to make sure that our students, the experience, like Dr. Torres said, is not impacted. And so that's our goal, is to continue improving our outcomes, no matter what. Regarding our teachers, you are absolutely right, Mr. Hagerty. They deserve lots of credit for the work that they do to ensure that their seniors, high school students, leave with what they need. So we are looking at ways that we can continue supporting this. Even if funding obstacles continue, they are our number-one priority.
Because of them, Timothy's right now sitting with all As. Hopefully, that continues. And he's already got thirty credits under his belt before he's even started.
Yeah, I mean, it's impressive. I'll tell you, I got a call just yesterday or two days ago, I think, from one of our early college parents who reached out to TA, because, you know, it's, it's new territory for us. We have, at the early, at the Valle Verde Early College, they've been attending UTEP, right? This particular little girl is almost a senior, of which she will probably, she's about to get her bachelor's degree and not graduate from high school. She's going to enter the clinical program, nursing at UTEP. And so we have a little bit of schedule conflicts. So we can fix that. But even TEA, when they called, they were very impressed that our kids can achieve so much in high school. And that's because she's, they've started UTEP since they're senior, the summer of last year. They graduated with their associates and immediately went to three semesters at UTEP anymore and are still going. So there is lots and lots of great opportunities for our kids. So that's what we want to continue.
My, my question was around certifications. I know you said the list comes out in October.
Yes.
But I also saw Mr. Damian, Mr. Longstreth in the audience, which reminded me of some of the certifications we've offered in the past. Are we still offering those high-end certifications where these kids are going in, making more money than I do? With like the Unity certifications and?
Yes, I'll have them come to the podium, and they can give you kind of those high-end, what we think will be a high-end or high-wage certification. So either of you gentlemen, come on up. We also have our College and Career Ready Night at Parkland right now. So that's why half the team is there and half the team is here. So Mr. Longstreth and Mr. Damian are work in CTE. They're two part of our instructional specials, again, critical members to making sure that this data. So if you can just share with the board some of the certifications that we offer that would be high-end or high-wage.
So we, we still do offer the, the Unity Certification. Career Center is primarily the, the video game design program. We, every campus offers the Autodesk, the engineering, online material. We, we still have tons of, every, every program at Career Center offers a high-wage, high certification, so.
How many kids are taking advantage of those?
How many, what's that, sir?
How many are taking advantage of those?
We had, we earned two thousand four hundred certifications total district-wide three years ago, two thousand eight hundred two years ago.
But as far as, as the high-end ones, like those, the OSHA ones that nobody can use?
Engineering, so Unity, we probably get thirty a year, because that's just Career Center, thirty, forty, the seniors. They, they, they can earn two years, different ones, Unity. Engineering is probably our second-highest program across the district. And, and we have a very high success rate with Inventor, Infusion. So that's, that's a great one.
That's cool.
Off the top of my head, I'm trying to think, top money, definitely engineering, business, entrepreneurship. That's a very common one, very high success rate. Welding, NCCR.
How many welding students? I don't know if you, I'm just curious, how many welding students, because those?
Welding, we, we, we actually, like Dr. Cohen said, we are topped out in, in those areas for like, for welding, for electrical, we, we have no more room for those students. So we're probably looking.
That's cool.
Fifty students, twenty-five, twenty-five.
Fantastic. I sure appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, we invite you to attend the Career Center whenever you'd like. It's a very different career, I mean, even, I know you've seen the building, but when the kids are there, you, it's nice to see them in action in full classrooms and using the first-class equipment, so. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I just have a question, then again, about our, well, I hate to call them lower-end, but I'm thinking, you're not going to make very much money being cosmetology. You're not going to make very much money, but those are still very sought-after skills. What will happen with those classes? Or there's?
Yeah, and I agree with you. I mean, cosmetology, our hair, our hair nail people, pedicure people, they make good money. So even if TA considers it, let's say, it comes back. So they have a committee, and I'm not sure how the committee's developed or so forth, but it's through the Workforce Commission. So they have different entities kind of working together to say, what is a high-wage demand job in Texas? So even if it comes back, let's say, a tier-two, we're still going to offer it for students, because we know the market might not be what they evaluated, the cosmetology, but we know it's still a market that provides a good living for, for anybody, whether it's a nail tech, or facials, or hair, all of that provides very good living, especially, you know, for anybody in any, in any city.
Culinary?
Culinary, we still offer it, too, and we'll continue to do that as well. One of the areas that we do want to continue improving and we are constantly working on is our internships, externships, opportunities for our students. So not only is it important that they receive the certification, but it's also important for us to network them and connect them with the right and have the opportunity to be in a, you know, in, in a kitchen, whatever it is, in an architecture firm. And wherever they work, it's important that they also experience the student, that side. I think the work experience is something that we want to continue also improving on.
I actually like what Mr. Hagerty said, too. I mean, if we emphasize the possibility of them opening their own businesses, and maybe add some of that training to the course itself, to me, that could, that could push us over the top.
Yeah, actually, in this past, this past spring, I think we had a, not a career fair there at the Career Center. And we did invite different banks, or one particular bank, I think it was RISE, if I'm not mistaken, to help students understand, how do you become an entrepreneur? Because that's a whole other things to learn for a student, right? How do you start your small business? How do you start your own business? So those are the things that we're continuously looking into. How can we partner up? the things that we're continuously looking into. How can we partner up? We have great partnerships with Marathon, with electrical companies, with banks, with different industries in El Paso. But we can always get more people, more business people on board and always continue to expand the opportunities for our kids.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Torre? Thank you, Dr. Chacon, for your presentation. It was amazing. Two topics. The first one is dual-credit courses. Does every high school offer dual-credit courses? And what would be the criteria that a high school might need in order to offer those courses?
So every high school does offer dual-credit courses. So outside of Parkland, Isleta and Hanks, those are your early colleges, of course, Valle Verde being a standalone, every comprehensive high school does offer dual-credit courses. The criteria is that we obviously enter in an MOU with EPCC, which is, comes to you every year. And from there, we, the teacher needs to be credentialed. So the teacher needs to get a master's degree or have a master's and get credentialed by EPCC in order to be able to teach that course face-to-face.
Thank you. Next topic is these high-tier programs, welding, electricians, and you mentioned and then twice that we're at capacity in those areas. Sometimes you have a feeling, I have a feeling that those, some of those types of jobs are going to be in great demand in the near future. And maybe this is a question that this school board, Dr. Delatorre, and all of us should consider, how would we expand the classroom sizes, so on and so forth, so forth, in case those jobs are in great demand and more of our students decide to go that direction?
So let me clarify that in some of the programs, they have, depending on who governs them. For example, if it's a phlebotomy or welding, each of those are, is governed by their own, the Texas welding, the standards, things like that. Based by, on those standards, you can't have more than 25 to 1 students because of the equipment, because we want to make sure we keep the safety of our kids first. So that's more, that's the first thing. The second thing is we're constantly evaluating our programs. So like I said, like I started in telling you, that student interest goes from one side to the next. So we're always looking at, okay, how are the students? How many students does this program have? How is it doing? And if we're not seeing the student interest, then what can we replace it with that does get student interest? So we are always looking at ways to, obviously also ourselves, keep up with the demand of the workforce or what's, what's important to the workforce. So we're always looking at strategic abandonment, I guess is a good word, to use in saying, okay, what's, what's not giving us the return on investment, what our student is not interested in, what can we replace it with? So for example, you know, teacher training, although it does have a lot of good success, if at some point it doesn't, we can say, okay, do we replace it with plumbing or vice versa? So we're always looking at those particular programs, but a lot of the CTE programs specifically are governed by a ratio for safety and security purposes.
Thank you very much.
So I guess I want to talk about it as being a proud Papa because I guess 2017, we started this journey. This board did, knew, knew what they wanted to support. And with the vision of Dr. Delatorre and yourself and your team, you know, like Damian, Mr. Longreth, Mr. Kadir, Mr. Martinez, Mr. Castro, and Ceci Delaue, putting together these programs was not easy. And I, we got to see it. And now where we're at is just a testament of, number one, your hard work and your dedication and definitely giving kids what they deserve. And I just want to say thank you for all, everybody that I named, everybody that's part of the CTE and education, Mr. Andon, and especially this board putting it, helping us put this together and Dr. Delatorre and yourself giving us a vision for these kids. So thank you.
Now, thank you, guys. College and Career Ready Night is near and dear to our hearts. We monitor it every two weeks. As a matter of fact, we meet as a committee because we, it's important that not only students graduate with a diploma, that's, that's what we exist, but now we are asked to make sure that they leave us ready to do something in the workforce and, and be able to change the trajectory of their lives. So it's very important to us. We'll continue working and we appreciate all your support. Dr. Torre has been a big advocate of college and career readiness as well as not being shy of saying, you know what, if it's 90, we'll reach it. And we did, you know, just, I know when a lot of people were out there saying, what's going on? He was the first to say, don't worry, we'll get there. And so we appreciate all of your support. And our students' lives will be different and hopefully impact them in better ways in the world, in the future.
Thank you. Any more questions? That's it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brenda.
We will now discuss agenda items as listed in the posted notice of the regular meeting of the, of Isleta ISD Board of Trustees for October 15, 2025, on related recommended motions by the Superintendent and Executive Cabinet and receive responses to questions and/or request for additional information through the Superintendent in preparation for deliberation and action on set items at the October 15, 2025 Regular Board of Trustee Meeting. Please stop me if you have any questions or wish to pull an item for a separate consideration. Consent. Consider approval of minutes for the, the Board of Trustees workshop and regular board meeting on September 10, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Monthly financial, monthly financial statement for August 2025. Number three, 2025, 2026 District Campus Improvements Plan. Onto our action items. Number one, option for filling board vacancy for District 7. Number two, donation to the Hanks High School Band. Number three, SB 13 Library Book Purchase Approval for Quarter 1. And closed session consultation with legal counsel regarding employee timekeeping and EMP center issues. Two, discussion of possible Unirado Multro termination of contract for the sale of property located on 1800 Winslow Road, El Paso, Texas, and discuss of other bids for the sale of district property. Okay. The order of agenda has been approved. May I have an electronic motion on the remaining consent agenda items listed on the agenda as recommended by administration? Have a motion by trustee Woodruff?
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda items listed on this agenda as recommended by the administration.
A second by trustee Hagerty. Please cast your electronic votes. It's the top one twice. One more. Be good. All votes have been cast. Results are five in favor, no, zero, and no. Thank you. Onto our action items. The op, the option for filling board vacancy for District 7, is there any discussion? Trustee Hagerty?
I had a quick question. When we were looking to have elections at the Central Appraisal District against our will, because the state mandated it, we were looking at spending well into the six figures. So I'm just curious what it would cost for an election, just for the District 7 folks, but knowing that we would have to, we would have to foot that bill by ourselves, wouldn't we?
Good evening, trustee Hagerty. Good evening, board members, Dr. Delatorre. So in preparation for this agenda item, I did reach out to Lisa Wise, who's the El Paso County Elections Administrator. And first off, she told me, if you're looking for a special election in May, I'll tell you that that's not a regular election for us. And we don't generally contract with local government entities, nor assist with their elections in those cases. What happens most often, and it's typically the smaller governmental entities that are either having their own elections, a special election of some sort, those entities end up contracting with the, the companies that provide the, the voting machines themselves. And so it's much costlier to have to do that. She said, if we could contract, let's say that there's another local governmental entity, a few others, and now maybe we have, as the county, enough resources to join in a joint election type of arrangement, you're looking at at least $212,000 to call a special election for one vacant trustee seat. So it's costly. It's, it's, it's getting more and more cost-prohibitive to, to call a special.
Say we do do that and there's three people that sign up and we end up in a runoff, is it 212 times two?
No, for the, for the one position.
Right.
Oh, for the runoff itself, yeah. Well, we don't have runoff, so we have the plurality. Yeah. No, so school board members run by, the votes are basically counted by plurality. So it's basically the person, the candidate with the highest.
No, and, and.
I thought it's plurality.
I think I can kind of tell you what it is, but not, we've never done it that way. We've gone into runoffs.
If a runoff would be required, I do anticipate that would be an additional cost with the county.
But it would be another.
It would be another expense.
It would be that much again?
I don't know. See, a lot of this assumes that no one else is going to call a special election during this, in, in May of 2026. And because it's not a regular election that the county normally or typically operates, it's, it's pretty cost prohibitive for the other local governments to call the special.
If I might, President Postiis, there is another option. You could run the election yourselves and not contract it out to anyone and have district employees at the polling places and have paper ballots and all this sort of thing. But I cannot recommend it because you want your elections conducted by professionals who are in the business of conducting elections and have gotten all, you know, been educated on how to do it and how to accept a voter and all that sort of thing.
We don't want to leave a doubt?
Yeah, it, I wouldn't recommend it. It's theoretically possible. And there are some very small, very small political subdivisions that just do it that way. But I can't, I can't recommend it.
Thank you. Anybody else? I would just like to say, you know, to the Del Valle community, to come out, you deserve a strong voice and carry your hearts to, to this table. Serving as a school board trustee is a chance to make a real difference, to help shape decisions and impact our students, teachers, families every day. If you're passionate about education, community pride, like your OFOD, and building a brighter future for Del Valle, now is a time to step up and serve. Your voice matters and our schools need leaders like you. Thank you.
I did have one other comment.
Yes.
I don't know if it's possible, and I don't know that it's ever been done before, but since it is either a special election or a appointment that we're looking at, to get the word out and to get as many interested qualified candidates as possible, could we set up some kind of town hall or something like that at Del Valle High School and invite the community and say, this is what a trustee does. This is your time commitment. Here's where you go, send in your application.
I think it's permissible to do that. I think if the majority of the board would want to attend a town hall of that sort, we would post an agenda, a notice of agenda, and just tell the public that you're meeting, you're not going to be discussing any business, but that it's a workshop in a sense. It's a board workshop to provide more information to interested candidates. I think that's the, the only concern I would have is making sure that if you all are going to form a quorum, we inform the notice, we inform the public that you're going to do so, when and where. And I imagine at the Del Valle High School, is that what you said, Mr. Hagerty? What you proposed?
In my mind, it just makes the most sense to have it at the high school instead of one of the feeder schools.
It's definitely something we can, I guess, consider. Ready? Thank you. Ms. Matlap. Does Elections Department give any justification for why a special election would be $212,000 for a single district election? That sounds super excessive.
It's, it's up there. It's one of the, the highest cost estimates that I've seen, but it's also, from my understanding, in my communication with Lisa Wise, it's the fact that they don't have enough resources to conduct the, the countywide, the countywide type of, implement the countywide type of measures that they normally would for an election for a hodgepodge of local governments, just a few, scattered. And so what they've done, I think they've made it a policy where they don't typically contract now with local governmental entities unless there's enough of them to, to put their resources behind. I think a lot of the cost estimate is both the wages, they pay for the, the machines, the tabulation of the votes. Can't recall what else. Tony?
Well, another, another problem in terms of the resources, and one of the reasons that historically the County Elections Department has not wanted, and that's part of the cost, they don't want to do it. And part of the reason they have historically not wanted to conduct elections in May of even numbered years, even though it is a uniform election date, is because in even numbered years, they're doing the party primaries, the runoffs for the party primaries, and gearing up for November general election. And so they just don't, they just don't want to deal with.
So they jack up the price super high to discourage, because there's no justification for.
It could be part of it. And the other thing.
There's just no way.
The other thing is that the price you normally get is because you are conducting your elections on the same day as other political subdivisions. And I think this quote was based on the assumption that no other political subdivisions would be doing it that day. But they just, they flat don't want to do it because of these other elections that are going on in even numbered years.
So for example, if the city of El Paso were to have a prop election, May 2026, and we would also hold a special election, then that would observe a lot of the cost, right? To, to Mr. Hagerty's recommendation, look, it's a really big problem. I mean, trustee Lucetto didn't even go through an election. She was appointed. She went unopposed twice. There's been no interest. One thing I think we can do is send out a text message to, to constituents in the area. I know it's nothing as far as the cost it would be to the district. And my understanding is that we have full capabilities to do so. And my understanding is that we have full capabilities to do so. And just let all the residents in the area know that they no longer have a school board trustee, and we're accepting applications, because I'm sure this board is going to elect to appoint. That would be my recommendation. I mean, we could have a town hall, but who's going to know about the town hall? And how are they going to go? It's just, it's just going to be us. Like, do we really want to make an effort to to let the residents of that area know that there's an opportunity to become a school board trustee? That would be one of my recommendations to do so.
So, you're saying, send out a text? How does that work? Would that be permissible? I don't know, I'm just asking.
I think, I think Ms. Moy would be able to be, would be able to speak to this, correct?
So, the question is whether it's permissible, legally permissible, to send out a text message? To generate interest in filling the District 7 seat? I don't see a legal concern.
And who would you send it to, the parents of the students?
Everybody, anybody that we have a phone number for. And I know we have a huge database full of phone numbers.
When the vote for the people that are voting is?
Whoever lives in the district, just send it out to them. Whoever we have a phone number for that lives in the district, let them know there's an opportunity.
I'm not that, I'm not sure that we have the information for all constituents.
Well, we have a lot. Obviously, we're not going to have the phone number of every constituent, but we have a bunch. We have a lot.
Parents, students, families. What else, Bobby?
What we can do is, we can work with our partners that we utilize when we send out mail-outs and things of that nature, obtain all the cell phone numbers that we possibly can through our partners, and then we can send a text out just indicating that we're looking for a board member. And if they're interested, they can demonstrate interest to the superintendent's office. I'm sure we can get a majority of the area, not all, but a majority.
Yeah, I've had meetings in the past before, so I'm aware we have this data, and we have these capabilities, and there's nothing legally that would prevent us from doing so.
As long as that's the direction that you give us, we'll certainly do so.
I think that's what I would recommend.
How do we, we do that? Do we have to put it on an agenda, or what do we have to?
So, we have prepared a motion for this agenda item. And let me pull that up. I think, because I think what you're going to want to do is, first, you want to decide how you want to fill that vacancy. And so, I think what I'm hearing is, you're probably going to want to fill the vacancy by appointment. So, your motion will include that, to fill the vacant District 7 seat by appointment. But then, you're also going to want to direct and authorize the superintendent's office to, if we have to create an application and an intake process to do that, or to send out text communication to as many constituents as possible on our database, to inform them of the vacancy and invite them to apply. We can do that, too. And I can read into the record a proposed motion, if you'd like.
You guys, everybody agree?
Well, I think my motion would be to ask the superintendent and staff to come back with a recommendation for an application process that would include outreach to the community, and how are we receiving applications?
Don't we already have that? I mean, we've gotten two, and they send a letter to the superintendent's office.
Right.
And we've entertained, but obviously, they weren't, they weren't in the district, number one, and they weren't in the district long enough. So, they already sent in their application. Then, after that, we were going to go ahead and present it to the board. But as of right, after those two, we haven't had any other interests.
In my understanding, Board President Bustillo, Mr. Hernandez, board members, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Mathewson, but I believe our practice has been not so much to provide an application process, but to receive letters of interest.
Letters of interest, yes.
And this gives the candidate kind of that, the liberty to share what they believe is most important, and their qualifications for the job.
So, is there already a process in place? Or are we just winging it?
Yes.
No, my understanding is that the process is to contact the office of the superintendent, and then we typically ask for a letter of interest of some sort, which is shared with the board. And that's something that, in the motion that I prepared in advance of the meeting, I recommended the following motion, and it's to move to fill District 7 vacancy by appointment, and direct the superintendent's office to receive any letters of interest, and make the letters of interest available to the board for its December meeting. I can include in there, if it's the board's desire, some sort of direction to provide outreach to our database, the constituents on our database, and then keep the language that directs the superintendent's office to receive those letters of interest.
Mr. Hagerty?
I really like Mr. Hernandez's idea, and I think that the word outreach might be better. What I really like to see is not just a text message, but maybe flyers or outreach from our teachers' associations, pretty much anyone and everyone that has a stake, and that knows people in the Del Valle area. And the reason I bring that up is when the trustee that was for the Del Valle area, when I first came on, was removed against our will. And we appointed another one. We had three people put in letters. The one that we appointed, the one that wasn't in the district long enough, and the one that didn't even live in the district. And then, when it happened again, it was, I think, two people, and one pulled their letter. So, by doing it the way we've done it traditionally, it just doesn't produce enough interest, in my opinion. And I think it goes to what you're saying. But I think if we use the word outreach and try more than just, I think the text message is great, but above and beyond. If we can do additional methods of outreach that don't necessarily cost four figures, if anything.
Okay. I can read a proposed motion into the record, and?
If I may, Mr. President?
Yeah.
Thank you. I mean, yeah, there's lots of ways to do outreach. I recommended the text message, because it's cost-effective. At this point, it's free for us to do. A mailer, I mean, I mean, yeah, there's, that's where my head was at. It's a quick way to reach a lot of people without spending any money. I think we need a motion to include a directive for the superintendent's office to come back with outreach recommendations for us to approve at the next board meeting.
I don't understand outreach. So, you want them to come up with a recommendation to do it, not do it right now?
Right, right. I mean, I don't think it's likely that we'd even appoint anyone until January. I mean, I'm all for making the motion right now to at least send out a text message.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I think it's something that we need to do to get, you said, more of an outreach for candidates out there, because we've had two, and we need to be able to get them out. So, the motion, you don't agree with the motion that Mata has?
Let me try. I'd like to make a motion to move for filling the board vacancy by appointment with direction for the superintendent's office to conduct outreach via text message for any residents that we have a phone number for that live in a Del Valle voting area. If you can please help me with that, Ms. Mata.
Okay. Okay.
Have a motion by Mr. Hernandez, and a second by Mr. Hagerty?
And just to be clear, I don't know that that was a motion, though.
No?
Yes, it was. I said I'd like to make a motion.
It was a motion?
Yes.
That's my mo, would you like me to repeat it?
No, I, only because you ended with, if you could help me with that, and so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, if that's a motion, that's.
Yeah, I'm, okay.
Can you repeat it?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to fill the board vacancy for District 7 by appointment with direction for the superintendent to conduct outreach via text message to all residents that we have a phone number for, that live in the voting area of District 7.
Thank you. We have a motion by Trustee Hernandez, and a second by Trustee Hagerty. Please make your motion. I mean, vote, sorry. Thank you. Our votes have been cast with the result of five yes, zero no. Thank you, Trustee Hernandez. Trustee Hagerty? Okay. Onto number two. Donation to Hank's High School Band, is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Trustee Woodruff?
So, anybody who's been involved with band knows that the way that these bands have to haul all of their stuff everywhere is, it's a massive undertaking. They get out there, and they perform these beautiful, beautiful shows, but it's a massive undertaking. And to have this help by getting this donation for Hank's High School, so that they are able to move these things with, hopefully, a little less trouble, and a little more, a little more help to those band directors and students, because students have to help with it, too, and parents have to help with it, too. I just think it's a wonderful thing, and I want to say thank you for this donation. It's, I'm sure it means so much to the Hank's Band, and I know that they're one of the top bands in our district. And just appreciate this help very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good. With no further discussion, may I have an electronic motion? We have a motion by Trustee Woodruff, and a second by Trustee Dwyer.
I move, Mr. President, I move to accept the donation valued at $9,000 to the Hank's High School Band from the J.M. Hank's Band Booster Club.
Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Five in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Item number three, SB 13, library books purchase approved for quarter one. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I wanted to ask, were there any complaints or concerns from any community members that were related to the district regarding this library list?
Good evening, Mr. Hernandez, Board President Bustillo's board members, and Dr. De La Torre, Priscilla Mata, Chief Counsel for the district. So, we did put out that proposed book list for the required 30-day review period, and we received no opposition, no public comments, no communication about the proposed book list. However, since it went through that 30-day review, we took the opportunity to review that list one more time. You have in front of you an amended proposed book list, yes, sir? And so, you'll notice, there's a strike through through some of the listed library book material that is no longer being recommended by administration. So, any motion to approve the proposed list would have to state that the approval is of the amended proposed book list, and that is what administration is recommending tonight.
Why is Kanye West, music industry influencer, taken off the list?
Dr. Chacon can jump in and help me. But some of the books, Mr. Hernandez, are required to meet TSLAC standards. That's the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. In addition to TSLAC standards, East Lata ISD has its own standards as well. What we like to do, and what Dr. Chacon has taught me, is that we like to line, align our library book materials in addition to the instructional materials to the teaks. That's what's, that's what we value here at East Lata ISD. That's what's our priority. And so, when a book doesn't meet those standards or all those requisites, it's put aside for future consideration, but not for the moment.
Okay. But I'm a huge hip-hop fan, by the way. So, you have Chance the Rapper, J. Cole, Drake, Future, and Kendrick Lamar, which all are, have vulgarity in all of their songs. Yet Kanye West is being singled out, why?
And I'll defer to Dr. Chacon.
Good evening. Let me have Dr. Luisa Guirabayesa, who oversees our libraries, present how kind of the librarians and the list as they reviewed it was, come to a conclusion.
Good evening. Dr. De La Torre, Board President, members of the board, Luisa Guirabayesa, Associate Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction. So, the reason that we've removed Kanye West was because of all the other rappers that are listed in there. They all talked about their nonprofit organization, and some of the other things that they've done within the community. His particular book does not. He only talks about his music, and it talks, we're not sure how much of the controversy it talks about, that of his current litigations that he's under right now. And so, the librarians wanted to wait to get to a little bit more information, and to see the book a little bit better before they put it back on the list.
I mean, I'm going to make my motion to approve the list that was recommended by staff, by administration, except that Kanye West, music industry influencer, be put back. If I have a second? If I could just give my reasoning, like I said, I'm very, I'm very familiar with all of these rappers, all of these rap artists. I just don't understand why you would single out Kanye West. I heard the reasoning, you even said you weren't sure about what the book spoke to. I don't know if you read every single one of the other hip-hop artist's book. And if not, I really don't like the singling out of just one hip-hop artist when you allow several others. So, that is why I am asking my colleagues to vote yes on my motion.
Have all the votes been cast? All votes have been cast? Motion does not carry. So, I'd like to make the motion. I'd like to make the motion, I move to approve the Purchase as Amendment listed of posed library materials as recommended by administration, and for which the 30-day public review and comment period was previously provided as mandated by Senate Bill 13. If I have a second? Okay. May I have a second? Please cast your electronic votes. Please cast your electronic votes. All votes have been cast. Result, four in favor, one no. Thank you. Now, on to the closed session. This Board of Trustees has determined that a closed-session meeting of the Board of Trustees is required to discuss the items set forth in the posted agenda for this date. Such closed meeting is authorized by the Texas Open Meeting Act, government- Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, including but not limited to the sections of purpose covered by the following section of the Texas Government Code, 551.071, 72, 73, 74, 76, 821, 27, 821, A3, and 84. Should the final action decision or vote be required with regard to the matter of consideration in closed session, the final action decision or vote shall be in the open meeting or in a subsequent public meeting with notice. The Board will now go into a closed session in the Real Grand Room at 7:25.
I recommine this board meeting of the Board of Trustees with trustee Hagerty, trustee Hernandez, trustee Bustillos, trustee Dwyer, trustee Woodruff. Trustee Lucero. No, no, not whoa, 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 whoa. And, and not Cruz. I think that's everybody right there at 8:12. Okay, may I have a motion? Oh, that's right. We have a call.
I move to approve unilateral or mutual termination of current contract for the sale of property located at 1800 Winslow Road, El Paso, Texas unless the buyer agrees to pay the original contract price.
We have motion by Ms. Woodruff. We have a second by trustee Hernandez. Please cast your votes. All votes have been cast. And motion passes. Five yes, none oppose. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.